So. Um, the first slide is just to introduce everybody again. Um, and remind everybody that the zoning commission is required. Um, just a quick update of who who folks are. You could do that, Jean, maybe during your welcome.
Okay.
Um, and then based on the uh little. Uh, subcommittee meeting we had after, maybe it was after the last zoning commission meeting. Um, there were three or four, maybe three people got together and the the emphasis was really. Um, a quick refresher on the tie between the zoning law and comprehensive plan. So this, these couple of slides are really just a very, they're the same slides that we had before, but just a very quick. Uh, going over, you know, we have a comprehensive plan. And, you know, talk about the purpose statements and the tie between zoning and and the comprehensive plan, just to. Keep reiterating that these, that the things that are in the draft zoning are grounded in the policy. In the direction that was established in the comprehensive plan. Um, a quick go over the topics that the conference plan um addresses. Uh, these are the, again, the same slides that we've shown both both other times. Um, and then to kind of do a highlight of each of the articles. And even though this is really focusing on articles five through the end. Um, I guess it was kind of felt like we did need to, just to get everybody on the same page, to just go back and. You know, a quick what the other articles are too. So I would talk about. Um, what the purposes are, um, why there's purposes, you know, what role they play and things like that. Um, and then talk about the definitions. Again, I just pulled out two definitions. We can take them out. We can change them. Um, you know, it's hard when you have, you know, fifteen pages of definitions to just. Pull something out, but I thought maybe these were relevant. I don't know. If you don't like these, we'll put in something else.
Yeah.
But just to talk about. The role that the definition section play, why it's important, why so much time was spent. On I'm making sure that they're right and they match, you know, the terms that you want to um, want to use. So. Open to changing these.
And I think those two are fine. I think that that your thumbnail sketches, I, and it should be brief. I, you know, again, this is, but I think that at least point out to people, that's where the definitions are. So, you know, I think that's great that this is in here. I don't think the particular definitions on there matter that much. As some people, here's what definitions are. They're important. Please review them, you know, et cetera. So.
Right, right. Yeah, no, I wasn't putting these up to read them or talk about them, but just to, you know, in general, have something on the slide.
Yeah, sounds great.
Um, so that's article two. And then um, article three. Um, is the current zoning map. And then I pointed out the um, four areas that um, have been changed since the last time. We at least formally showed this map. And so that was the added the Caroline hamlet, um, added the expanded hamlet over here. Expanded the Beesomer hamlet over here, and then we um. We made some uh changes to the water resources and flooding overlay. So this is the most recent map. So I would go over that. And then um, also in article three is the um, the uses. Or sorry, article four is the the use table. Um, just to kind of give them a feel for what it is. I would go through, you know, how you read it, watch each of these codes mean how it's used. And I just pulled off to the side. Um, I think, I don't remember if it was Barb or someone in our little subcommittee meeting, thought that it was important to reiterate. That we allow home occupations in all districts. We allow accessory dwellings in all districts. We allow multifamily dwellings in all districts with a special use permit. So the things, those were pulled out as we want to make sure everybody goes away feeling that they know those are permitted uses. Even if there might be an abbreviated site plan review, they're still permitted uses. So we could change these again if you want to highlight something other than these three. That's what was suggested.
Yeah, I I think those are excellent.
Yeah, I do too.
Um, and then um. The use or the uh dimensions table. Um, again, I'm not expecting anyone to read this. It's it's, you know, got too much information, but I want it again. So people get used to seeing the districts on the top, the dimensions on the side, and that we have different dimensions by, you know, to address. And try and meet the goals of each one of these districts. Um, and again, a couple things that were pointed out by the subcommittee. About not requiring minimum lot sizes, allowing for average lot sizes. No setback requirements, um, commercial building footprints established. And that the new draft eliminates the net acreage. Um, I might have to explain what the net acreage was. Because I'm not sure people will even remember that. So that this last one was the only one I wasn't quite sure. Because that might take more explanation than is worth if it's not even in the draft. So that's up to you.
Yeah, but it's way too complicated and people won't understand and it just makes everything sound really complex.
Get rid of this slide?
No.
No, good draft. Let me take the 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 part about net acreage.
Oh.
So take this one out.
I think so. I think it's just, it's not necessary. People's eyes look laid over.
Um, I think so too. And we might get, we might get questions from someone who has boned up on it. And if so, then we can answer that question and explain that.
And I I guess I'm torn. I'm willing to see it go, but you know, I know that that is a sore point with a number of residents in the town. So I thought it was great that it was on here, but if you think people won't get it, I, you know.
It went out in all of the announcements. It says it in all the announcements.
Okay, anyway, you know, I'm, you know, no worries either way. Want to take it out?
So you want me to take it off?
It said all the announcement.
Well, it says in the announcement, remove the concept of net buildable area, which would have reduced the amount of buildable acreage on a parcel. By discounting highly sloped lands and lands within the water resources and flooding overlay. That's, you know, we. Then take it out because it's it's already there. People have had the opportunity to see it if they have to, they want to ask a question, they can.
Just there's some details that they get to be just really small. Um, in in the scope of the two hours, we have to disseminate information. That's a pretty small piece.
Okay, alright. Gone.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, so then um. The next slide I have is. Since there's been so many questions about the, where the water resources overlay came from and how the map was made. Uh, this was a map that Rick had made at Bill's request. I don't know, a couple meeting, at least a couple meetings ago. And so it doesn't show the whole town, but I thought that it was a good illustration to show. Um, you know, how we have different data sources that were put together to create the overlay. Um, so. I thought that might be a useful thing to have in there.
Why doesn't it show the whole town?
What?
Uh, be because you couldn't see the detail. If if we had the whole town, you wouldn't be able to see.
Right.
Things. So this is a zoomed in view. So you can tell, oh, here's flooding, here's riparian, here's wetland. And Nan can actually point to those on the map, but you know. That's the right reason, Bruce. That's why I had him do that way for the paper. My one question on this is the use of the word associated with streams, streams. I mean, wetlands, you know, I I wonder if we should say water with rather than streams there. So that's a question. What what do people think?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, yes. Um, and.
I I know for a fact that I would have a question simply because I have a stream and it's not on there, or I can't really tell. What's going on?
I'm I'm gonna ask, um, Mark, we had a couple of people say that they felt that the map that was on the computer. They couldn't make out what they were doing. I was gonna ask if you would have some of them printed again. And then people can come in and look at them or pick one up.
Sure.
And that we have a quite a big one. On a board when we have the meeting at the Brooklyn Village Community Center.
Okay, so you would like um, a large one printed for the meeting?
Yeah, and then, I don't know, fifteen, twenty copies.
You mean of this map?
No, of a big, of a big map that's in the, that's already, that's already in the um.
You mean this, this one? Um. This one, okay.
The water resources.
That map. Just the.
The water resources map.
Right.
No, the big water resources map.
Yeah, what do you mean by the big water?
Yeah, I don't know.
The water resources map for the town.
Well, that was the previous slide Nan went to. That shows.
That's this.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, I can see it.
Yes. That's, that's the map of the town. It has water resources on it. It has the hamlets on it. It's everything.
Yes.
Right. And, you know, and I, I think this would not be a good idea because I guess not going to show up, but you could indeed. Use those things that Rick developed for the the blow up and make a map like this. And maybe if you printed it on, you know. Thirty by forty inches, you could make out the little details and have one there. I'm not necessarily recommending that, but if Bruce thought that would be important to have, you know, that, I'm sure that could be done now that Rick has done the work. To figure out how to, you know, we we played around with shading and colors and dots, and we've we've done that work now, so.
Oh, you mean, are you talking about a big version of this map or a big version of the layered map?
Of of the layered map. I am not necessarily recommending that, but I'm saying that we could print a large version of that. If we could figure out, could you really see those details and how big we have to print it in order to see them? And I don't know those answers. I'm thinking it's probably, it it's what some people are crying out for is, how do we know what went into this?
Right.
But this is showing that, and then it's a question of, do they trust that it was done properly elsewhere in the town?
Well, I could say that me, as a person. First thing I would do is look for my stream on the map to know what was going on. And if it's not there.
Okay, so so I think, I think you can do that with the other map, because your stream would show up as part of the water resources overlay. And you say, oh yeah, that must be my stream. So I think that that one is good enough by itself, then, a big version of the. Uh, town with just the water resources overlay, not the layered map. And and if your stream doesn't show up, that means it's intermittent and not regulated, you know what I mean? So, you know, hopefully.
So this map doesn't show up in my document anywhere.
No, this, this is just an illustration because there have been so many questions about. How that water resources overlay map came to be on the, on this map. Whoops, on this map, we simply show the water resources overlay. And it doesn't show the components that went into creating that. This map was to describe the components that we didn't just pull those things out of a hat somewhere, that they were based on. Data that existed and we can explain, you know, wellands and flood plains and all of those kinds of things. So. This was illustration only. If it confuses matters, we can take it out. If you need this for the whole town, I know that Rick didn't, I mean, this is just a blow up of one piece of the bigger map.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think we need it for the whole town, but I was just tossing it out there in case other folks in the zoning commission felt that we did. And as we discussed at a previous meeting, the the town code officer does need to have the layers, right, at hand easily. So he, so when someone says, I see water resources is on my land, what does that mean? He can say, oh, that's a flood zone, so this town law applies. Or, oh, that's a riparian zone, so these apply. So the town code officer has to have that to guide people to what's going on. And that he can show them when they want to know, prove it to me, show me, then he can print a a copy of their property. That's what I think.
She she says that was just a blown up section of that map. So if he had the whole map.
No, I I, he probably didn't. I mean, you know, I don't, no, I I told him, do this piece of the town. So I think, but I think it'd be easy for him to print the whole town, but I question whether it, what scale you have to print it at so you could see this. That's what I question.
And I think your wording, man, on these are the components that you use. Would be a good way to say it too, rather than overlay comes from layers. So it's just easier for me to comprehend if this is what was done.
I say that in a different way. I'm not sure I understand what you just said.
You just said that these were the components that we used to develop the overlay.
Instead of layering.
Instead of saying like layer, you used like just that that word. These are the components that we used to. Come up with it. Come up with the layering. I, and I don't know, I just, it just sounded to me like I should follow that one.
So I was gonna follow this slide up with the list of what those components are.
Oh, okay, fine.
So, yeah, so I I just hadn't gone to that in the slides yet. So this map and this, um. I couldn't put it all together and make it readable on one map, so, or on one slide. So it's on two slides.
So, um, so I, well, Bruce, I didn't want to, if you're still stuck, had questions, go ahead, sorry. Alright, and if not, so here's something I just want to point to the zoning commission. Because this, I did not understand this until Rick and I went in and made that detailed map. So we're gonna toggle back and forth a little bit. So go go to the next slide. Um, so where the second to last line says DEC regulated county map wetlands. And then it says in parentheses, you know, Tompkins County Wetland, two thousand twelve, keyed to New York State, D E C Wetlands. Alright, so here's what took me a while to understand is when we've mapped the water resources layer for a wetland. Rick always used the boundaries as determined by Tompkins County. So for example, the Thomas Road Wetland, if you now go back now to the slide. So at the north end of this map, that orangey thing, that's the Thomas Road Wetland. The or shade, orange shading is how the county says these are the edges of that wetland. If you put the D E C's boundaries up, they're different. They're larger. They go outside of the water resources overlay. Um, but what Rick and I think Nan felt was that the Tompkins County said their data was the most accurate. So if you actually went out there and did the delineation for the wetland that you have to do, it would come up with something that looks like this orange thing. And so that that's why the water resources overlay, if you carefully compare to the D E C map. Doesn't include the entire D E C wetland. Hmm. Because what was drawn was Tompkins County's version of the area of the D E C regulated wetland. And that's what those, that thing in parentheses means. I just want to make sure we all understand that. In case someone comes up and says, hey, but wait a minute, I looked at this on the Tompkins County G I S website. And the D E C wetland extends beyond this wetland, this overlay, and that's the reason. Okay, end of, end of little lecture.
Well, listen, at the end of the day, it's the map that rules.
Yes, no, no, and this, and and the point is that Rick said this is a much more better, a more accurate rendering of the wetlands that are really out there. So why, why should, why should we have used the wetland outline that that we was more likely to be less accurate? So yes, it's the map that rules. Only if your footprint winds up inside this overlay, do you have to go through abbreviated site plan review. And that's okay and safe and ecologically, environmentally safe, because that's probably where the wetland is, really. Not outward New York State drew it. He actually thought New York State was probably gonna be updating and moving away from maps. To some extent for that reason in the next iteration.
Well, also in the next iteration, D E C is going, is slated to change their.
The size.
Their role from twelve point four acres being a regulated state wetland to seven point four. So in, you know, in in twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine, you know, those boundaries will be different for what's a New York State regulated wetland.
Bruce?
Okay, well, that makes, it's gonna change. What I didn't understand is if the D E C regulates a larger area than that, and I do fall in that area. I would still have to go under a site plan review, right, or a special use for that?
No, you would just have to meet, if you were outside of the water overlay and you were, let's say you're here. And you were still in a New York State D E C well, and you would still have to follow the hundred foot buffer from the New York State D E C. Rules, but you would not have the overlay rules if you were out of the overlay.
Yeah, but I think the point where, and that's a good point now, but I think that if you were just outside, somewhere that's an overlay. Then, and and then you, the the hundred foot buffer is from the actual wetland though, right? You go in, you do a delineation of the wetland. If it turns out that the wetland is over there and not here, you have nothing to follow from the D E C. Is that? If you are outside.
Correct.
And so that's what this is, that's why these boundaries were chosen, is that because. When you, in practice, when you finally go out there in the field and do the delineation, it's gonna look like this map. Not the one the D E C has on their website or Tompkins County. But yes, Bruce, you're right. You would have to at least contact, do what you're supposed to do, which is a delineation and contact D E C, as my understanding.
Okay. Okay, so we would talk about this. And then um, moving then into article five, which we haven't talked to the public yet about. So my intention was those first few slides were, you know, relatively quick, not a lot. I mean, we'll give some detail, but not. Two hours of talking on those first four chapters. Um, the, and then to kind of highlight, um, it's still kind of wordy, but article five is a big chapter and it's got a lot of things in it. It's, it, it talks about how we're gonna conserve ag lands. Talks about the environmental performance standards that we have set for certain features like large scale water withdrawals and steep slopes. Um, this is where we have the sighting and lot layout guidelines. Um, in the, in the water resources and flooding overlay. So. I I really only have, because I didn't want to spend, you know, the whole time we have with the public doing the presentation. So I really wanted to just kind of introduce what's in this article. I I don't think there's any substitute for, people are gonna have to read it and look at it um, to understand it. But we can give a highlight of what's in this chapter or what's in this article.
Okay.
I I agree. Like you've done a good job here. Um, and with lock, there'll be questions that would go into the more details.
Right, right. Someone could say, well, you know, wh- what are you, what are the citing and lock layout guidelines? And we can talk about that in the answers. Um, the supplementary is, so the same thing, these slides kind of go through, kind of highlight of what's in the chapter. You can describe how supplementary standards work with everything else. Um, in in that, you know, it talks about kind of these general uh, general standards for commercial. Design, um, we have a section on talking about home occupations and accessory dwellings being allowed and what those expectations are. We have references to all of the other town laws, so they don't get lost in the shuffle. Um, you know, and then specific standards for these specific uses. Um, and this is where we can talk about conservation subdivisions. And and again, I I, we can add more. I wasn't gonna go through a lot of explanation and show the pictures of the difference between a conventional and a conservation subdivision. But if you want more detail here, I certainly can add more slides.
I think we should just keep it simple and let's see what people ask.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you'd say with the conservation subdivisions, I assume what you're probably thinking is something like, you know. It is, you know, one way of designing, you know, a subdivision has certain principles. We can go with them late, you know, don't, I would not enumerate them there. And um, you may have to say something about what a major subdivision is, not real detail, but say, you know, again, that it's a bigger one that has, you know. Uh, probably above five houses or something that's sort of.
Yes, I would say a couple sentences about, you know, what the goal, why, why it's in there and what it's intending to do.
Yeah, my thumbnail sketch, my thumbnail sketch, when people ask, but you say, well, conservation subdivision is designed that, you know. Basically requires about half the land to be left unbuilt on, right? That's my my two second when people ask me, so.
Right, right. Except I always add that it doesn't, that that doesn't mean you get half the density.
Yeah.
That's an important part.
Right.
So anyway, article six, or sorry, article seven is um, the site plan review. Um, I would talk about, this is, you know, largely an update from what you currently have. What site plan review is all about, because I think it's important that people understand the difference between site plan review and special use permit. Um, so I would talk about all of that. Um, and I think it was, you know, that the fact that we did. Take it from a two step process to a one step process, um, shows we're looking for. You know, not burdening the process. We want an efficient process so people can um, get through it without a a lot of delay. Um. And then the next chapter or the next.
Sorry, sorry, one, so one question on that. So, so um. In general, right, and 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 multi family developments are the thing that kind of crosses over, but. Residential uses are typically gonna fall under abbreviated site plan review, right? I mean, if you're in the, in the water resources overlay or some of the home occupation stuff.
Yes.
But all the first part, the the site plan review predominantly, the main part, that site plan review, not abbreviated site plan review, applies generally to commercial projects.
Not generally, almost exclusively, yeah.
And so that's what I would say. That that the full site plan is almost exclusively for commercial projects. And there's this abbreviated one meeting form when, when, you know, maybe residential property or something, you know, some, along those lines. Others agree?
Yes. So do you want me to change the the wording on these?
I'm more what you say when you, when, you know, just make sure you make that point, is what I would say. But you could maybe to help remind yourself. Under the abbreviated site plan one uh, or somewhere, yeah, a prompt to yourself to emphasize, you know, primarily commercial. And residential, you know, or home occupation for the other. I don't know.
Okay, let me make a note and I'll, I'll figure out some way to add that word commercial in there.
Okay, because again, that's, just, just because people are gonna look at, you know, someone might. Look at the site plan and say, oh my God, I gotta do all this to to build my house. And of course, no, the answer is no, so.
Right, okay, alright. I will definitely emphasize that in what I say, but I might add. A little word somewhere, maybe I'll add a box down here or something that that reiterates that.
We think it should say there somewhere, so it's plain and simple, so I understand.
Yeah, um.
You don't wanna read this and say, damn, I gotta do all this to build a house?
Yeah, no, we, we're gonna make that clear that that's not it at all.
And and the same thing applies to the previous article, correct? Supplementary standards?
Um.
Well, we're right there. It says non residential business building design right at the top. So that, that's good. I think it's good that's there.
Non residential and business building design.
Right.
So maybe that's something you could say, Nan, is again, just like article um, six. This, this is primarily for.
Yeah.
Only for.
I wonder if maybe by adding this one on the same slide, maybe I ought to make this its own slide. Because and then I can add commercial site plan rever- review.
Yes, that would be great.
I guess, yeah, I I've been trying, you know, toying with the idea of like full site plan review versus abbreviated site plan review. I have, I've been trying with various. Phrases when trying to explain, there's this thing that can take multiple meetings that commercial projects go through, and there's this other thing. That, you know, a house might have to go through. And I've been toying with, when I talk to people, what words to use.
Okay.
Um, but I think you're right. Putting that on a separate slide would help make the break between site plan review. On the one hand, commercial and abbreviated site plan review.
Okay.
On the other.
Alright, so I will split those out. Um. And then uh, special use permit, um, I wanna um. Emphasize, because everyone thinks, oh geez, special use permit, that's a terrible thing. I want to emphasize that. It, those are all permitted uses. And that's, we should not look at a special use permit as something that is a horrible thing to get or a difficult thing to get. They are permitted uses, but uses that have some characteristic that. Needs some more review and may need um, to be carefully cited or planned so that that use fits into the street or the neighborhood or or wherever it is. Um, so I I know everywhere I go, people get all upset, oh my goodness, it needs a special use permit. I, I, you know, legally and as a planner, I don't see it that way at all. I mean, some planning boards may make it that way, but that's not the way it should be proposed. It should be really looked at as these are permitted uses that have a characteristic that may make them harder to fit in with their neighbors. And so we're doing a review to make sure they fit in so that everyone can, um, you know, they, they can be developed and. Coexist happily with everything else around it. So anyway, I would talk about, a little bit about what a special use permit is, um, and how it's done. And, you know, a lot of that chapter comes from the state law that tells you how you do a special use permit. Um, and that this, this, um, I would talk mostly about what these considerations are to show. That's what the planning board would, or the review board would be looking for when they do a special use permit.
Okay, so Nan too.
I think it's, if it's possible, um, use a, an example.
Okay.
Uh, what do you mean by an example, Jean? Like example of one of the review factors or example of? Uh, what do you mean by an example, Jean? Like example of one of the review factors or example of.
Something that would, that would have to come up for special use.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm not sure. A church wouldn't have to, would it?
No, you know, and I contemplated that picture. I was running out of pictures to use. I, I thought about that. I don't want to convey that a church would have to get a special use permit, so I might change that picture.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
There you go.
What was that? I didn't hear what he said.
What's a car wash? Or I don't know.
Yeah, that's.
Something.
Yeah, I, I actually thought of that. And then it was like, I'm running out of thing. I don't have like hundreds of pictures that I could use. So I will change that though.
It's a beautiful picture.
Yeah, people will get.
No, right. We don't want to, right. I will find something else that would clearly be a special use permit that has to be fit in.
So, uh, back, sorry, so it's minor, minor thing, uh, the word conditions in the second, it doesn't need, it should probably should not be capitalized. Um, and then, uh, so question for you. So, uh, your view on special use permits. Uh, that they are allowed uses and da, da, da. I was speaking to a, a planner employed by some government in Tompkins County. Who was definitely much more of the opinion of, oh no, these are things you, you probably don't want, but if you put some conditions on them, then. So how prevalent is your view in the, in the planning community versus the other, uh, opposing view?
Yeah, um, well, I don't know if I can answer that.
Um, okay.
I think there are a lot of views that a special use permit, something that you assign as a special use permit. Means you don't really want it, but if you look up the definition of what a special use permit is, they are permitted uses. So I very much disagree with that perspective. I, I don't know how many other planners. Um, I know the, the, the sphere that I work in and the lawyers that I work in with, that's their perspective on it.
All right.
But.
My suggestion here is that we are very clear when we make our report to the town board, that we are operating under this belief. That's uses subject to S U P are permitted uses. And that that is our intent and we want to convey that intent to the town board. And we hope that if they pass, um, a zoning law, that that is their, their legislative intent. Because that will be very important in the future, that therefore legislative intent counts in the courts. So when you, when you are clear about your legislative intent, then you can't get a review board that runs wild.
All right, anything else on this one? Um, so then we go over what a non-conforming use is. This is where we want to make sure that. Um, people understand that they have a small lot or in existing use in a district that, that use is no longer allowed. That it'll be allowed to continue, to talk about, um, that small lots that might not meet. Um, uh, the, be able to meet the density, um, still is able to have a house on it. Provided they can get water and septic approved by the county on that lot. Um, and that, uh, grandfather uses can expand, uh, in its footprint up to twenty-five percent. Or in, in its intensity and use up to twenty-five percent. So we would talk about. That.
Okay.
So, um, the only, and this, again, there's a lot of words already in the slides, so.
I know.
Um, and it's okay, I'm not complaining, but exactly, these are things maybe you would add to, in what you say. But specifically in this presentation by Nolan Gray at the Fire Hall. He showed a map of a lot of non-conform, shaded and non-conforming properties and made the statement. Basically, if you want to do any, I'll, I'll have to pull up the, you know, again, this is by memory, but basically if you want to do something on these properties, you want to modify your house. You're going to have to go through site plan review. And that's not true, right? So as, as we've now clarified, established, just because a building is on a non-conforming lot. A lot of what he colored in were lots that were small, like any, any rural lot smaller than three acres got colored in on his map. And any lot in Brookton Dale that was smaller than the, whatever we set, the half acre, you know, got colored in. And he conflated erroneously or intensely, I'm not sure which. A non-conforming parcel size with that, the use or the structure also being non-conforming. So my point is, a lot of people heard that and there was a gasp in the audience when he was talking about that. Um, it's, would be worth, I think, trying to clear the air on that now. But, you know, so anyway, it would be something you would say that just to clarify that if, uh, you know, a building on a. Lot, you know, non-conforming lot does not come by size, does not make the building non-conforming. It's something, I don't know. So that's, that's a piece of advice.
If that's an issue, it is likely to come up in a question as well.
Yeah, preferably a small example. Which you do, because that's like Bill said, when he showed this huge map with all this.
Right.
It was like, whoa.
Well, you know, it kind of, so how do we? I, I, I mean, I, yes, I agree, we have to talk about that, but how do we counter? The, that now that information is out there and it's, it's, you know, was kind of presented to the community. Now we come back and say, no, that's not true. I'm just wondering, you know, are they gonna, how is that going to come across?
Well, I, I'm sure that there are people, people who won't believe us, but I think the reality is that is what it says.
I mean, you could just say something like, you know, I want to clear, just say, I want to make sure it's clear to you all. You know, the section applies to non-conforming buildings and non-conforming uses, right? Because that's, that's the language in that section, right? Non-conforming use in building. Um, and that, you know, it doesn't even reference the particular talk that we, the, your own statements made and just say. You know, ju- just so you're aware, if, if the lot's not conforming, that doesn't make the, the structure or the use non-conforming. Something, you know, low key like that, so that the information is there, but you're not like directly saying, oh, and this guy said this the other day and that was wrong. Because I think that.
Um, again, I think.
I, I will do that in a Q and A if it comes up in Q and A, but you shouldn't be doing that in the presentation.
It may again be useful to, to use an example of a. Let's consider that you have a lot in a hamlet and your lot is less than. A half acre, yet it's so, you know, and just describe that. But that does not make your house non-conforming.
Yeah, and, you know, you can still remodel, expand, whatever with, uh, there's no conditions on that, no permit review.
Right, the only, the only thing is, you know, if you have a teeny tiny lot and you're doubling the size of your house, you still have to meet the water and the septic. Those, those rules, that never changes.
Right, right. And it's perfectly reasonable to say that.
Okay, all right, gotcha.
Okay.
And I mean, I just, I want to just go back one second, really quickly. Just, you know, the question in my mind, special use permit. Ends up requiring site plan review in almost all cases. Is that correct?
Actually, in all cases, we changed it. It's all cases.
All cases, so special use permit is. An additional step beyond the site plan review. Um, I think that, you know, we kind of, we're glossing over that to some extent. Um, and I think that, that, you know, it, it's, it's up to us to, to make that clear. Um, and it's the appropriate place to make that.
Sure. So, so you could add a bullet point, second bullet point and say, these also go through site point review or something. Is that what you think, Ernie?
Uses are subject to S U P and will also be subject to. Yeah, works in hand with site plan review.
All right, I mean, we could change that to that requires site plan review.
Yeah, I, I would actually put it as a separate bullet point. Take it out of there and that's my, again, I'm just me, but I would put that as a separate bullet point. Maybe it's a second bullet point. I don't know. Um, or a third, fine, whatever, and then say.
There you go.
They also, but it works, it has to say that it's required, that site plan is required. Site interview is required for projects going, asking for special use permit.
Didn't they get away with abbreviated?
Yes. Requires that interview. No, I don't think there's, I don't think there's any abbreviated site plan review for an S U P.
Right.
Okay, just want to make that clear.
So I, I agree that it's a, it's a separate, um. Uh, it is a separate step, but I also want to make sure that. When you, when you do this, they're done at the same time. So it's not like you go through the whole site plan review. And then you start over and go through a whole new process. They're all part and, so at the same time that you're evaluating. How this building fits on the lot, you're also evaluating how this use fits in that area. They're all part and parcel of the same thing.
Right, but you want to go through the whole process of doing a site plan, preparing for a site plan review. If you're basically going to get told that you can't do your, uh, three hundred foot long car wash. Um, that, you know, no matter what is like. Know what I'm saying? I just, you know, it's, it's. I think that there may be cases, or in a lot of cases, somebody will go to get a special use permit with the idea of. Okay, I'm just going to test the waters here, apply for this before I have to go and get my engineers and architects and everybody on board. To, you know, put the whole long process together. Um, you know, so you go to the special use permit establishes some parameters under which you can operate and then you design your building.
Yeah.
That's how I've used it. I, you know, I, I don't do it all. But that's in a couple of cases where I had to get a special use permit, that just came, you know, we had a sketch.
Yeah.
You know, we were not prepared for site level.
So I was wondering, I mean, there is a sketch plan conference as part of site plan review. That's what I was about to say and not that your sketch is exactly right. So that, that might be where that happens, because before you go through all the rest of the stuff for site point review, you do have a sketch plan conference. Where you basically come in with, you know, your napkins and whatever.
Right, yeah, I mean, we, you know, most folks, it's pretty dangerous for someone to come in with a fully baked, all fully engineered plan. Right from the get-go.
Right.
I, I mean, I think that's, I mean, that's how's. That's how I would hope. That's why the sketch plan meeting i- is a really, really important meeting for the review board. To have a, just a sit down and informal with the applicant, what are they planning on doing? What's the, you know, on the napkin kind of drawing, what's the use going to be? And, and get a feel for, then the, the review board could say, well, we're concerned about. Noise or traffic or whatever it might be. And then the applicant can go off and, and incorporate those things into their full design. And then they come back with those things, hopefully, more fleshed out.
So, so to answer Ernie's question, would it be appropriate at the end of that sketch plan conference for the review board have sort of said, okay. You're doing this car wash, but you can't go above X gallons. I mean, they probably wouldn't have quite the information to do that at that point, or would they?
Uh, they, I'm guessing they probably wouldn't have the information, but they would say. Yeah, we're really concerned about the water use, which is a special use, not necessary. That's one of those, see, that's where there's such a close tie between site plan and special use. Sometimes it's hard to distinguish them, which is why they're typically done together. So the, the review board could say, wow, you know, we, and we know because we live here that there's not a lot of water there. And before you move on, we really want you to do a pump test. And next, come back to us and show us that there's water there and then we'll progress from there. So I think that's what they could do.
I think that they, they aren't done concurrently. I mean, that's just, that's just. You, you go in for your site plan, your, your, uh, your, your, apply for your special use permit. You go in, you have a discussion about what you want to do. You start to, you know, they ask questions, you answer questions, you go to the next step. Site plan review doesn't come until you've got a design project ready to get shovelled, you know, I mean, it's just, you know, so, so.
Well, so what, what, what if we just take out the done concurrently? And sometimes maybe it will be done concurrently and sometimes it won't, but we certainly will talk, we'll talk about this slide.
Require site plan review here we go.
Okay. Okay, so, um. The chapter ten is on code enforcement officer, or code enforcement. This is kind of the to-do list for. The, how the code enforcement officer is going to, uh, enforce, uh, in, in the, the law. And outlines the steps that he or she has to take to do that. Um, this, um, includes the remedies for violations. And, and I wanted to emphasize that the penalties are consistent with New York State town law. Um, lots of communities want to, you know, put on like thousands and thousands of dollars of prevent these violations. And, and that, that's not really, um, not the right way to do it. So this was kind of the marching orders for the code enforcement officer. Um, Article, uh, eleven, uh, outlines how the zoning board of appeals. We'll talk about why there needs to be a zoning board of appeals, um, that, that this follows very strict. Um, procedures that are outlined in state law, talk about, um, area variances and use variances. That, that this whole chap, this whole article offers, this is the relief valve. This is the, um, you know, the, the, the referee. Um, when there's a dispute over something, uh, it's the interpretation of the zoning law. This is, um, the critical piece, uh, that has to be in the zoning law if it's, uh, adopted. So I would talk about why is there and what it is and how it, um, how it would work. Um, and then we've added in Article Twelve, which is, um, more detail on the review board. Which you haven't really had, so this again mirrors the procedures for every, you know, lots of people call them planning boards. You call it a review board. Um, it establishes the membership of the board and the procedures. Um, and it, um, oh wait, this one.
Yeah, I, I think that came along by mistake from the.
Yeah, that is, that is the wrong one, that, um. That is wrong. This should be here. Oh wait, I have that there.
Yeah, I think you probably copied the text boxes, the next slide, just forgot.
Okay, okay, all right, you're right.
But what I don't know is, was there a third point you meant to include there?
Yeah, I, I'll have to go back and look at that. There might have been. Okay, so Slide nineteen needs some more detail.
I think it's important to perhaps say that the review board is required to have training.
Is what?
Isn't it, it's required to have training.
Term limits? Oh, training, training? Sorry, I mean, yes, well, both the review board and the Z B A are required to have training.
Yeah, I, I think that's an important thing for people to understand, that they get, it's not like, they just make it up.
And yeah, you could put it, and it, you know, five hours of yearly training, or I don't, or just say yearly training, whatever. Yearly training, okay. You want, you, you, you want the specific hours not in there, Ernie?
I don't think you have to tell them any hours, just.
Okay.
Annual turn.
Annual training.
Yeah, oh, we probably should put that same thing in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, um, then the amendments lays out how the town board would, um. Amend or change the law in the future, which is a specific set of procedures that would have to be followed. Um, that includes advisory report from the review and planning boards, um, public caring. Um, I might add in here a secret too, just so that they know that it's, it's, you know, a process to go through. Um, but certainly something that town boards do on, uh, regular or irregular basis. So wanted to make sure that, you know, people recognize that there are opportunities, both from the public. And from within the town to amend the law as you go along in time. So there, that this section lays out that process.
Mark, what's your question?
Nan, uh, does that mean, the second bullet, is that review and planning boards, or in our case? Uh, for normal towns, would that be the planning board and the Z B A? Uh, for normal towns, would that be the planning board and the ZBA?
No, not the ZBA.
Okay.
No, um, and in in, I'm not sure we talked about that. I think that that's what was in the law. What that's what we have in the draft, but most of the time it's just the planning board. But you've got this, you know, because you've got the review board and you've given. The planning board has had a lot of responsibilities to develop laws. I thought it made sense to have both of them review it. But I think that most communities just leave it at, in this case, it would be just the review board.
Uh huh, and um, that that leads to another. Kind of loaded question that I've been meaning to ask is sort of a, I mean, it's. Um. Whether we would want to consider revising the naming of. Of our review board. To be the planning board. Because that is a common confusion. And for in. Most towns, what our review board does is is the planning board.
Great. Correct.
And so um, I know that question has come up internally and I just wanted to. Toss that out there. This probably would be the time to do it, if we ever did it.
Um, and Mark, a question, so. Um, then would there be some sort of like planning advisory board or something that is the current planning board? Or are you actually gonna fold all the duties into one board? Uh, the two.
I mean, I I I would imagine that we'll pretty much continue to do what we're doing, Bill.
I I would think so too. I just thought it had, we needed a name, because. If their review board becomes the planning board, which is great, because then everyone else will actually know what it does, because it's like every other town. Then we needed some other name for what has been the planning board.
There's no need, there's no need to even do that necessarily.
What, you have a planning board and a planning board? I'm I'm confused.
And what your view board and review board is, as it's, as it's.
Yeah, but but Mark just suggested calling the review board the planning board.
I don't, I guess I don't understand why. And I guess, I think that's something for the town board to consider.
Right.
We give you our, we give you our version and you guys could do whatever the hell you want with it. We, yeah, that's what I, what do you think? Cause I'm, I don't, I don't understand why I walk. So, and that's probably because I haven't been on the board, so I don't understand.
No, the, the, I mean, the only reason I suggested it was for consistency with other towns, so.
Yeah.
Um, but. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, yes, I mean, a- as far as it is, it is different. But as long as you're consistent with how you use the terms, you know, you created your own pathway and that, if that's what you want, that's fine.
Yeah.
You know, I, yes, I think it is, it is a little different in the the state laws. You know, you might find a lawyer somewhere along the line that says, oh, well, state laws authorize planning boards. They don't authorize review boards, but I I don't know any, if anyone would ever really get that picky about it.
Okay.
And 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 I think, you know, as Gene just said, yeah, this is something that the town board can decide.
That's right. I understand that.
And, you know, if you want advice from the zoning commission, I guess, but I, we have nothing to offer.
No, okay.
Yeah, I think at some point your town attorney is gonna read this and maybe he'll suggest something.
Right, right.
Right. So then the last slide is really what the zoning commission next steps are.
Right, right.
Yes.
For that one?
Yeah, okay. First, you're first. I was wondering about. Both went one, set off procedures. Are the procedures vast? I mean, is there?
No, they're not.
Or maybe you should state. What procedure is?
Well, it's, it's written in the.
Okay.
I I guess, I mean, I think it's written in the law, so.
Right.
Well, I mean, it's possible that Nan could highlight a couple. I mean, it basically is there, or Bruce, do you have points about how immense or maybe you'd like Nan to mention? I guess that's the way I should really ask.
Um, not really. I just thought if they weren't super vast, it might be. A little more self explanatory with it.
Okay, yeah, so maybe a thumbnail sketch of the main, you know, if if you can be done in a sentence or two, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, all it says in this is. The town board made from time to time on its own motion or petition. Or recommendation from the planning board or review board amend the regulations and. And districts established under this law.
Well, but 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 the key point is an amendment winds up needing a public hearing. Right? And I I think secret review, all that sort of stuff. So it just. In other words, to counter to some extent. The accusation that you're just gonna turn around and change this all overnight to make some draconian. Monster zoning law. The point is that, you know, the amendment procedure is also a reasoned deliberate. Time process, so. I think.
I mean.
Yes.
And that, I mean, it should be, that's just. That's, that's important too.
Yeah, it's important to to show that it can be amended, so, you know, change can be made. And important to say, but they are not frivolous. It's not something that just happens overnight at the whim of the town supervisor.
It says, it just says, all petitions for any amendments to the regulations. Shall be filed in writing in the form required by the town board. So.
Yeah, but I think the. The 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 process pieces are important, as Bill mentioned, that. It does get input from the review board. It does have to have a public hearing. It has to have the environmental review. I added county planning board. Any zoning amendment would have to go to the county planning board, so. It's, uh, you know. Amendments happen all the time, but they are a process that the town would have to follow so that there's, everybody can see it and comment on it. There's legal notices, the whole bit.
Uh, my last comment is. Just the the first. Uh, proposed article. You know, nine X, the eight amendments. Just sounds like it's gonna be amendments to article eight and and I don't know, you know, if you have this.
Put the after there.
And we change the color on all of the things so that it's article eight amendments. It's in black and the proposed is in blue, do that in all of them, or put a hyphen or in something.
Mm hmm.
So it doesn't read like a sentence.
Okay. Like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that that would be all the way through, I mean.
Yep.
Well, uh, uh, so, so I, well, I, Ernie, I think what you're suggesting, actually, because that makes it look like amendments is to the proposed article. So I think you want article thirteen also in black. Is that right?
Article thirteen, yeah, all in black. Get rid of the dash. You know, and then.
Yeah, so now the dash can go away. So the title of the of the number, yeah, okay, so and it go that way everywhere.
Yeah, so then.
Hmm.
All of a sudden.
Okay.
Previous slides, you just highlight that.
And the first time I did this, I didn't have proposed in there.
Yeah.
Um, but then, uh, um, at the the subcommittee meeting, there was a comment about that these are all proposed. These are not all set in stone, so maybe we don't even need the word proposed.
I like the word proposed.
Okay.
Okay.
It is.
So should it be like? Should it be that?
Yeah, that sounds, that looks great. I like that.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't matter, just, you know, in this particular slide, it was only in this particular slide. It looked like you were gonna be describing amendments to article thirteen and.
Okay.
Right.
It's about amending the zone.
Right. But but then go back and, you know, be consistent in how that's.
Yep, I'll do that for all of them. Yep.
Great.
I gotta, I made a note for it.
Good.
Um, so then the last slide is, um. What's going on here, um, that that the, and there is actually one more step in here, is that the zoning commission is gonna meet. After the public presentation, I could add that in, but the next. Formal step is that you're gonna hold a public hearing. You may make edits to the draft zoning based on the input, either before the hearing or after the hearing. You submit the final report to the town board. Once that happens, you guys are dissolved. And then the town board has to go through all of these processes if they choose to adopt it.
Yeah.
Aren't, aren't we gonna revise this before it goes?
Yes, she said that she.
Yes.
Okay, let's put that in. That's important.
And then.
Okay.
Okay, so Nan, in and in the second box, which is currently the second bullet point. Um, it should either be, it should be developed slash submits. Uh, or develop slash submit. But yeah, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna put the extra box in there then, and.
Yep.
Um, good. Thank you.
Um, and then just.
Go ahead, yeah.
Send a question or comment.
Yep. Mark?
Uh, Nan, I had a question. I think it was the, was it article ten, the code enforcement officer?
Yes.
Okay. Um. I, uh, this, this is a question about like. Based on my perception of how it would work, that the code, you know, the the CEO would like. When an application comes in for whatever. He would facilitate, he he would, you know. Look at that and compare, you know, uh, the zoning map for the town and, you know, basically. Advise the applicant, um. Accordingly, or be able to do that. I'm just thinking about the facilitative role that he he or she might have.
Right. That person is usually the one that does that. Some towns have. You know, a planning board. Clerk or a planning board staff or, you know, it depends, but I would say the majority of towns. I work with, the the building inspector or the code enforcement officer is the person that someone comes to. And brings the application to, and they are kind of the. The gatekeeper. They'll say, oh, yes, you know, here's the use table. It's it's an allowed use, but you need a site plan review, so I'm gonna refer this to the planning, to the review board.
Okay, would it, I mean, would it be? Wouldn't people think about, I mean, having that as a bullet, um? As.
I don't think it needs a bullet, but when you say to the role of the code enforcement officer, maybe you can say something about that now.
Okay.
That good? So there are, I think, twenty one slides, is that right?
Uh, yes. Well.
Twenty twenty two, because of the.
Twenty two, and that counts the cover, so there's, yeah.
Yeah. So our our hope here, this is a two and a half hour meeting, is that this takes in the area of a half an hour to forty. To forty minutes. And then we go into questions. So thank you very much for this work, Nan, because this is what we want to get out to people, and then we want to think about how we get questions. So in this first meeting where everybody's on Zoom. Um. I think what we should do at the beginning is ask people to. Put questions that into the chat. Does that make sense?
Once you have from. Okay, you, oh, no, you can do chat, yeah.
Yeah, well. So what we did at the very first one in last December is questions in chat. And what we did at the one in May or June, whatever it was, even on Zoom, we allowed people to. Speak.
Yeah.
And at the in-person meeting, I think we're gonna go into hybrid format, and so I'm gonna recommend a hybrid format here too, but that's to be discussed. That is that we take. Thirty, forty, five minutes, what are half the time remaining as written questions and the other half is as oral questions. Um, the rationale is, again, that some people are gonna wanna speak their question, because they want that soapbox or it's just too long to write out. And on the other hand, I, we, I think we're trying to encourage actual questions. And I think written questions tends to give you written questions. So I'm gonna suggest that. I agree it might work better in the in-person meeting than on Zoom, but. What do people think?
I don't know, um, I, what do other people think? And are you suggesting that we say, like, say we have, um. Say we have an hour and and a half left. And I say, the first forty five minutes will answer questions that we see in chat. And then we're going to go to, um. To people who raise their hands.
Yeah, that that's what I would recommend.
Are you talking about the Zoom, just the Zoom meeting?
Right.
Oh.
But I think we are doing something similar at the in-person meeting, but yeah, that's a possible way to go that I think I would favor, but I'm, you know, I'm open.
Michelle?
Well, so then what would, if I'm monitoring the chat, what would my role be? Would it be to read everybody's questions?
I think you might say, um, as you're monitoring the chat, I think questions one and four are similar. Um. And I return to you and say, and and say, do you see similar questions in here? So that we don't answer the same question over and over again, but if there's something that's similar, we could combine them. Would that be good?
I could do that. I just, uh. I just, I'm not sure I can visualize how this is gonna work for. I mean, in some cases, in other words, in my read, I could, I can read all the questions and then say, oh, look, this is similar to this one. I I'm not sure I'll be able to keep track if somebody asks a question. At number one, and they asked a similar question to number ten, say, the tenth question. I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to consolidate all that stuff that quickly.
Right, I agree. If we get to question ten, we say, that seems, have we already answered that? And we could see if that, could people already answered it?
I I guess I just wanna be really clear on what my role is for chat, and is it to read all the questions in the chat, which, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, I'm. I mean, I think that if they come in during the meeting, that will make your life easy, right? Because you could be copying and pasting, say, or something. Um, but then when there's like thirty questions coming in all at the same time at the, at the end of the presentation, that's gonna be a lot harder. Um, but yes, I I I would say, yeah, your role is to read them. To yourself first and then read them out loud to, so everybody hears them. Uh, and combine questions as as you can.
Okay.
That's team.
Ernie, um, excited, Bruce?
I mean, I don't know, it's just, just, man, would it be easier if we said? Two questions in writing, two questions to give Michelle some time to look at. What's coming in, so she would know. This question, but this question that go, we, we answer two. So, you know what I'm saying? I don't know. It just, that would give her some time to look at the questions that are coming in, so rather than. Trying to read twenty questions and say, as as you were going through, I was just thinking, and also the public might. Be a little more inclined to ask what's going on. If you did two and two or one and one or three and three instead of forty five minutes, forty five minutes. I mean, I don't know, I'm just suggesting, I just. And Michelle's gonna be the one handling the hard part, so.
Okay, I, I, I think that seems reasonable. I I want to give. Uh, time for people who wanted to make statements or ask questions. Of three minutes each, and I wanna have time for people who just are happy to write a question in. So I'm happy to do that. I think we could do three and three. That makes sense, sort of like how you go across the one lane bridge, right?
No.
Yeah, I.
The way you're supposed to go across the.
I'm a three and threeer, what can I tell you?
So the one question that I have from a logistics point of view then is, so. People are typing in their chat and Michelle is looking at them and. Getting ready to read them, so. Then someone raises their hand, either this, well, they won't see a video, but they'll raise their hand in the chat box or in the, you know. In, in the, in Zoom, and so then. How do we call on? Are you just gonna randomly pick somebody to call on that has their hand raised?
The first person who puts their hand up goes to the top of the list in Zoom.
And the second person saying, so, so.
Okay.
Keep the queue.
The first person.
Okay, okay.
There's always a queue.
Uh, so you're suggesting. Do I understand you right, Bruce? You're suggesting, say, take. Three raised hand questions and then three questions from chat?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and that might, and I think we'll do that. I think maybe we'll start with three raised hand questions. That will give you time to look at the chat questions.
Yeah.
We'll do three chat questions and then we'll go back to three raised hand questions. And that will get us through the thing. Do you know?
And the open meeting as well, is that what you say?
I I think so. Does that make sense?
I think it's better than doing forty five minutes of Zoom people and forty five minutes of people.
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, I I I agree with that as well.
So, um, so at the. At the first, first meeting, which is all on Zoom. We, I will explain this in the beginning before Nan, uh, makes her make starts. Um, and when we start our questions again, I will say if anyone's joined later, this is what we're doing. We're taking three questions. From people who have raised their hands. When you raise your hands, you go into a queue. And then we're going to have three questions from the chat. And we'll answer those. No one speaks for longer than three minutes, either the person asking the question or the people or the person answering it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, could you also add that, uh? We're not gonna answer any questions until the presentation of.
Yes, I I will say that at the beginning. We're not answering questions until the presentation's done.
So there's no point in putting a lot of questions in the chat before that time?
Well, maybe.
They may.
Right.
But.
No, I'm not saying to say that, but it's just, I'm saying because. I'm not saying to say that, but it's just, I'm saying because the, their question may be answered before the end of the presentation. So if they're just, they're just like, you know, whipping off questions in the chat as it occurs to them, they may actually get the answer before the presentation's over.
Sure. Okay. So I, I, I will say that, you might want to hold off on putting things in chat until you, until we get through the presentation, so you'll see. Okay, but raise your hand if you want to ask a question or make a comment, you know, and we'll get as many.
When the presentation's over.
When the presentation's over. Yeah. Okay, I'll write those things out. Um, then let's go on to the meeting that is in person.
Wait, one more thing about the Zoom meeting. I'm sorry. Who's going to answer the questions?
Good point.
It won't be me. I'm reading the questions, so I am off the hook.
Who would like to answer questions? I think it depends on what it is. Um.
General, who's going to answer the questions unless there is someone on the committee who would like to buy in?
Yeah.
No. I, 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 did I hear Ernie say Nan's going to answer the question?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I basically strongly disagree with that, but the, I think, again, this is our zoning plan. It's bad enough to me that Nan's making the damn presentation. Um, but we gotta know this stuff. We got to, Nan can chip in if we screw up and say, you know, in a very polite way, there's, you know, that's, that's another detail you ought to know is this. But come on, folks, own it. So I'm happy to answer questions. You guys all realize that about me by now. But, you know, I mean, we've got to be able to answer these questions. It's not Nan's plan, it's our plan.
Yeah, but sometimes you have to look things up. I mean, you know, you can't just answer all the questions off the top of your head.
I mean, I would suggest we let Bill can do it, and then the rest of us can build in it. I mean, I.
That's fine, fine. I'm just, I'm reading the questions, that's all.
Yeah. No, I mean, what we did at the last one, you know, and tell me how it worked from your end, is that we sort of, you know, even on Zoom, you can sort of say, oh, I'm, I'm happy to answer that one. Does someone else want to do it? You know, we can have a little chit-chat for two seconds amongst us. Um, and doesn't have to be me. Yes, of course, I'm always happy to answer. I, you know, I like hearing myself speak, but, um, I'm happy if.
And we do it to Bill. We do too.
Yeah, Ernie or Barb or anybody else wants to take it too. But I, I agree that at, at the very least, sometimes that too, like, you know, maybe Barb said something and I added a little bit, or, you know, that works too, I think.
I, I do too. Okay, so let's say that, that we will try to answer questions that we feel knowledgeable about. You can raise your hand. Your faces are going to be up there as well.
Did a little round, a whole bunch, trying to decide who's going to answer every single one of these questions.
Yeah.
You know, I think we should have a lead person, if it's not Nan, Bill, Barb.
I will ask Barb. I'll ask Barb. Let's go to Bill and then Barb and then Ernie. There, Ernie, there are things.
If they need some fill-in, we chime in, but otherwise, we're going to say, oh, no, ask you, you know, it's just, it's a way that's like, it's before we stop time.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm okay with that, but I thought it didn't go that badly at the last Zoom meeting. Well, we didn't do it like that, but whatever.
I don't even remember that, actually.
We're not going to do it.
Must have been there, but.
Who would like to be a timekeeper? Bruce, do you want to do the timekeeping? Thank you.
Well, and honestly, Bruce, I, someone complimented you and thought it was great that you were doing the timekeeping at the, whatever, the June meeting or whatever, so.
Yes. Thank you. So Bruce will do timekeeping. Great.
I used my phone when I did my, when I did it for the Zoom meeting.
Use your phone or, or use a.
I can bring that stopwatch.
Use an egg timer, something like that. Okay, great.
Set a timer on your phone, but stopwatch might be better.
Okay. Um, and we're going to end at nine-thirty, um, because we could go on forever. Or we're going to end at, I guess it's, we start at five-thirty and end at nine.
Then we started.
And we end at nine.
Right.
Nine.
On the, on the, uh, Saturday, we're starting at two-thirty. The hall is going to open up at one-thirty. We may have to put out chairs, so, um, I'm going to drag my husband down and help him, and we'll set out chairs and do all that stuff. And I think we're going to have to take the chairs down, and we're going to ask people who are there to help us do that, um, as well. Um, and we'll get the whole thing set up, and sometime during this week, we'll do that as well. What I'm going to do is have people sign in and put their, when they come into the room, so we'll have a sign-in sheet. Um, we'll also have a sheet for people who want to ask questions, and so that will be in order as well, and so that I can take questions from that sheet. Um, I'm not letting anyone have to talk twice this time. Yeah, one question. And, um, we will, um, also go back to the people who are on Zoom and explain how they get themselves put into the queue.
So you're going to have people sign in, and then you'll call on them in the order in which they sign in?
Yeah. I will call on them on the order that, that they sign in, and I think instead of being on chat in the second meeting, we'll have people ask questions because I don't know how else to do that, because.
Yeah, but too hard to monitor the.
It'll be too hard, hard to monitor when we have both chat and live, don't you think? Because I think.
Complicated for sure, but, you know.
We, we could probably do it if in, I don't know. Uh, I just, I, back, so I, I thought I heard you say there were going to be like two lists. Everyone's signing in who comes, and those who want to speak are signing a separate list. Is that what I heard you say, Jean?
Yeah, the only reason that I'm going to do that is, uh, I, I want for the record to be a list of how many of who was there. And we, I don't know.
Why?
I, do we have that on, when we do things on Zoom, when you do?
Well, only.
The list of who's the participants are? I don't know.
I'm not sure.
Sign in. They only have to sign if they want to ask questions.
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable with the general sign-in that you were there.
Okay.
Just from a personal privacy sort of standpoint and, you know.
Okay.
But if you want, if you're going to step and speak, you're going to be saying your name anyway, so that I don't have a problem with that list.
Okay, so I'll have them sign up if they want to ask a question, and I will ask them, um, to give me their name when they, when they speak.
Um, but we are also taking written questions at this?
I prefer written questions, but, um, and I, I guess we could do that, but I don't know how to do that with the speaker thing.
Well, I, I think that, yeah, so I think that it'd have to be that, that people on Zoom maybe aren't so many questions in chat. I don't know. But basically, you can have, you know, there's roles. You have to have cards out on the ta, on the chairs. You need a runner who picks up cards from people when they write their question, and you need someone to read those cards. It's jobs. Um, but I think it might be good to have some written questions. Again, the big complaint I heard about the in-person June meeting was I went and didn't learn anything because all I heard was a bunch of, you know, rants against zoning, and I was really hoping some questions and I'd get some information. And I would like to encourage questions to be asked. And I think written cards is a good way, but maybe it's not the only way.
How about if this would work? What if we do this? So at the, at the combined meeting, Nan makes her presentation, we take two, two comments or questions in live from the audience in there. Then we take two comments or questions live from the Zoom. Then we take two comments or questions written from those people in the room. Then we take two comment, two, um, things that were put into the chat from the Zoom. And then we repeat that. So we have four of two. Does that make sense?
I don't know, it sounds really complicated.
We will write that in a, uh, up in a thing and send it to Nan, and she can put it in a screen.
Yeah, we have four ways to, to ask a question.
Right.
We will, and then we will take questions from each of these four different, different venues, I guess.
Successfully.
Yep.
Yeah, no, that's, that's it. Not unreasonable.
Uh, 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 you know, it doesn't have to be perfect.
They won't be.
Oh, I mean, you know.
Some might be a little bit more than three minutes, some might.
So I think that could work, and I will write this up, and Nan, I will ask you to put it up as part of, um, the, the PowerPoint, and then it can be in front of people.
Okay.
I'll be monitoring the chat for that one as well.
Yeah, and you can monitor for the chat, and again, Ernie can, um, no, Bruce can time, and, um, it's going to, it's going to be lovely on the day. It's going to be fine on the day. Remember that.
So you'll need post, like postcard, we, the first time we did postcards and pencils for everybody.
Yes. So I'm going to have paper, and I'm going to have pencils. And, um, I actually have a fair number of those. Um.
Okay, so again, something like a postcard stock that's thick enough to.
I, I actually have exactly the correct thing in a.
Awesome.
Um, in a box that I will never use again, so.
So Jean, I'm, I'm just trying, going back, trying to remember what you said. So you would take two questions from someone standing up and asking a question, then two people standing up in Zoom orally and saying whatever they want to say.
Right.
And you would take two written questions from the audience.
Right.
And then two written questions from the chat. Is that, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, um, and then we'll go back to the first one again. Michelle?
So I, my question is about identifying who's asking the questions. So when I, when I have questions from chat, are you expecting me to say, this is from John Smith? His question is, what?
That would be nice.
Okay.
But you might not know, Michelle. It might be some email address or some, you know, you don't always know from Zoom.
Right, right.
That's fine. If you don't, fine.
Okay. And likewise, uh, if somebody's writing their question on a card.
Right.
Will they identify themselves?
I will say, if you want to identify yourself, sign this. If not, just pass it on up.
Because I'm thinking some people may not feel comfortable identifying themselves.
Exactly so. And I will, I will say that.
Okay.
Do they have to identify themselves?
I, I just said, I guess not.
No, no, I mean, um, I mean, at a public hearing, there are some different rules, but this is a public information meeting. There's no reason someone has to identify themselves. If you're standing up and speaking, most people, you know, a lot of people in town are going to know you anyway. It's nice if someone does say that, but they're not required to.
Yeah.
In my view.
That seems fine.
Okay. Um, anything else?
Well, so someone needs to get those cards.
I have the cards, and I have a.
No, 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 someone needs to, like, when people have written on them and they want to turn them in, someone's got.
That would be Ernie's job. Ernie will collect.
And then he'll hand them to you?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess just one more, uh, I suspect that there will be more questions or comments than time that we have. So how are you going to handle the ones that we haven't gotten to?
Um, I don't know.
Tell them to write it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that's, that's all your last slide, Nan, that can be popped up again, saying, you know, uh, if, if you're, if you had a question we didn't get to, so sorry, but you feel free to email it to the zoning commission at this address.
Right.
If we have, that's the one question though, so we have, so we didn't get to all the cards. So we have the question. Uh, do we feel some obligation to then indeed answer those on the web or not?
I don't. I don't, I do, I think, I will, I think the questions themselves will be informative.
Okay, I think, and then this is fine. I think tell people, so sorry we didn't get to it, you know, if you have a written or all question to get to, just please send to us if you still want it answered. I think that's.
And likewise, in the, don't you get a log of the chat questions? So like, we would have a log, right? So, uh, we have those that don't get answered. We can look at those for our own information.
Yes.
Okay.
So you're not going to answer those questions, are you?
I, where, when would we?
Well, won't the, uh, won't the subsequent zoning commission meeting focus on the ones that bubble to your?
What subsequent zoning? Oh, being, yes, when we come back.
Yeah.
Yes, I was like, I, I thought you meant a public meeting. Yes, when we meet again after these two meetings, that's what we're going to do, is we're going to think about what were people's questions? Are people, is there something we need to change in here? Is there, you know, is there anything that people ask that we're, that we weren't completely unable to answer? What else do we need to do?
So we'll need to look at those questions.
Yes. So let's forget that, about when we meet again. So we're meeting on, we're meeting on Monday. We could meet on Tuesday, but I think it's too much. We're going to be exhausted between Monday and Saturday anyway. Uh, I think what we should do is meet in early, in, meet in December and go over this, and then we're going to have to produce a final version. And we have a bunch of questions that we've got amongst ourselves, and I'm sure we'll have more questions that will come in. So let me look at a calendar and see when we should meet, because there's this thing.
I thought we had picked December sixth.
Uh, I think we had. I wanted to just check with people and see if that's okay. So December sixth is Tuesday the sixth. Does that work for people?
Yeah.
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay. Sounds great. Um, and I think, reach, so I will have Michael put that up as a, um, as a meeting. And, um, if we have to meet again, um, I suppose we could meet on the thirteenth possibly, if we feel that we need to meet twice. Because I think heading to the twentieth is probably getting, it's very, I think we've also hit, um,
Holiday travel.
Holiday travel, and I think we've hit the Jewish holidays as well.
And, and I do think it's good to put the thirteenth in there. I can't promise to make that meeting, because indeed, again, as I said, for me, just the week or two before Christmas is actually when we're most busy, but I will try. But I definitely agree with the sixth, and I'll, I think we might need the thirteenth.
Okay. So good. We will have that as a tentative, and, um, and then at some point, we are going to have to look at our report, which will have other things in it as well. And, and Nan, you're probably already working on that to some degree.
Yeah, I, I had an outline. I, I started picking at it the other day to identify what the components are that it needs to be. Uh, it's, and I, I reread, um, you know, what a zoning commission's report should have in it. Um, it, it's really, um, an accounting of what the steps are that you went through, what the public input that you went through, um, you know, the, the direction you were heading, any messages like, you know, um, what you talked about, about the special use permits being, um, uh, permitted uses, and we have a list of other, we've collected other recommendations as we've gone, like, you know, you should update your adult use law or whatever those were. Um, and then, uh, a summary of what you're recommending, that you're recommending the zoning law to be, you know, move forward and be considered by the town board, and then you append the, the actual text of the draft zoning into the report. So it's that, it's actually, you'll have to go through that. The preliminary report is actually what the public hearing is on, is the full report. So it's got all that introductory and background material and the draft zoning. Then it's the report that you edit that gets sent to the town board.
Right. Okay, um.
Interesting.
Is there anything else we should do tonight? Are we, I'm thoroughly exhausted. I don't know about the rest. I think, I think we're ready for Monday and Saturday. I will write up what we said tonight, and I will send that out as an email. I know that my email works. I'm just not sure about when I attach things to it at this point. And, um, that doesn't seem to have passed along any corruption to others. So, um, anything else that we should do tonight? Should we talk about any of the other things or just postpone that until after these meetings?
I mean, at this point, the, you know, the documents that's out there is the documents that's out there.
Right. Okay.
Has, has the document been posted?
Oh, yeah. It's been posted for two weeks.
Okay. And, and has there been any feedback on it yet?
Mostly about, um, no one has sent any particular questions. People have said, I can't look at the map. It's not clear enough, and, and that's why Mark has got to produce some. I don't know, it could be their computer. And, um, do you think we should have copies of the zoning law at the, when we're there in public, a couple of copies?
I should like to have one, because it's easier to.
Yeah.
Flip through it to find answers to questions.
Okay, so let's, let's produce some copies.
So Jean, a question on that. When people say that the map isn't clear enough, are they essentially clicking on the map that's in the, the. are they essentially clicking on the map that's in the, the PDF that's been posted and trying to look at that?
Yes.
All right, so I think that what we need is a higher resolution, separate copy of the map on the web, on the zoning commission webpage.
Yeah.
Um. Oh, it's not separate, is, if not posted as a separate map?
I don't think so. I haven't checked. We've done that in the past, so yeah.
I could see why they would have trouble seeing it. Yes, I will get you, I'll have Rick do the highest resolution map for that. He can, and I'll, I'll send that over to you, and you can just post that as a separate click on here to see the map.
Okay, that would be great, and then I can send that out, and when I do, and the, um, Mike is putting up all my little reminders to people. Come, because it's gonna be fun, and there'll be cookies. I lie about the cookies. There are actually cookies. Um, uh, um, okay.
This is the side, uh, the, uh, the Republican candidate for town supervisor and the town of Hector.
Uh-huh.
We want, that was the referendum on zoning of the town of Hector.
Huh.
We will not be seeing zoning for the town of Hector. And so perhaps in that election.
Wait, does he get to make the decision himself or, or what?
The whole board was, was, was this, is, I believe, the majority of the board is now anti-zoning, and they will be passing.
What, what county is that during?
It's, uh, Skyler, isn't it?
Skyler?
Yeah, it's on Seneca Lake.
That's really interesting to me, cause, um, Fugue, everything, practically everything is zone. It's really interesting. I think it was Fugue as a very a Seneca, I mean, I think of Seneca as a very conservative county generally.
Yeah.
But they have a tremendous, they have, it's only that way, I think it's.
Well, it's, it's the point is, the people who's down the lake, the wine.
The wineeries?
Who are pro zoning.
Oh. Interesting, cause the, um, well, the people along the lake, um, the wineeries certainly pay all the taxes. Yeah, that's how that works. Okay, well then, I think it, I think we will adjourn. Unless we have anything else that we need to do, I will send out stuff. I will send out a timeline. We will go down and make sure that all of this magical stuff works.
Yeah, let me know when that is, Jean, so that I can get the slides up and you can test the voice and all that stuff.
I know, okay.
So whatever meeting afterwards, we'll go over a lot of questions that I had on some of the older stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And your questions and any questions that come up, and if there's anything that we think we need to change, we will change it. And then if there are big changes that we've made.
Okay.
We can explain that to people.
So, and, and Jean, let me just take two seconds here then, cause I don't know, it, it may be a question that just comes up at the, at the meeting. So, you know, Ernie has, you know, put this forth about, about how we define dwelling, or is it a lot, I think it's a great issue to explore. Um, the other main issue that I was thinking about, um, let's see, what was it now? Uh, one was lock coverage. Well, oh, I know, so I think this is a, something for you to all to ruminate on. So the original site plan law the town had, starting in two thousand thirteen and continuing through about now, um, the triggers for going through site plan was a ten thousand square foot building, which is a pretty big building, and, and, or one acre of disturbance. And I remember talking to Don, he said they figured that the one acre disturbance area was small enough to catch most things that needed to be caught. The, um, review, the, the task force decided to make that like three thousand square feet, cause they felt ten thousand was pretty big, which it is. Um, but the point is, there's always been small enough things that didn't require going through site plan review in this town. So the idea I'm toying with in the context of our zoning law is could we essentially come up with a category of exemptions? That is, if you could meet these criteria, that you were small enough as defined as maybe two thousand, you know, with some number, that you disturbed enough, a small enough area, maybe it's a half acre, maybe it's an acre, I don't know, that you use little enough water, some number there, and if you do boom, 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 if you make this set of things, you don't have to go through site plan review, even if the use table says that you do. Um, and the rationale for that is that those are products that probably would sell through site plan review anyway. They really wouldn't have an impact. That's why you set these kind of, we're gonna make it small enough, they wouldn't. But if you're Joe Schmo or Jane Schmo, opening up your first business and you only want a small little shop, this, the thought of having to produce a, a seeker thing and a this and that means I don't wanna do it. So I'm wanting maybe to create an escape valve for the truly small residential user who's doing just one, will only go through site plan once in their life, and to make it easy, and the way to make it easy is if you really are doing something that's not gonna cause a problem in the town, then you shouldn't have to go through site plan. So that is a notion I want folks to think about. Is what would those criteria be? Do they wanna go this way at all, or just leave it the way we have it in, in the use table and the site plan review law? So.
Okay.
Food for thought between now and, you know, in case people start yelling and screaming, you know, about site plan review.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so, um, December sixth, I think it would be really good to have an example.
Yeah.
For me, that would be very useful to have an example of what that meant. Yeah, we can email. Okay, um, it's been lovely, uh, unless anyone objects, we are adjourned. I'm hearing, hearing no objection. We are adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone. Yeah, thank you.
Be in touch about when. I'll try to set this time up for us to go and see if this thing works.
We'll email, we'll email.
Uh.